...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, you will call me, orders, look for a motion of the agenda approval. Nothing to add?
No.
Let's motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Agenda approved, the minutes from ten twenty-six.
I read through them and I didn't see anything, so I'd make a motion to approve its printing.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Minutes approved. Do we have general public concerns this morning?
I had a concern and I decided I'd ask the ladies from the hospital if they would come. With the numbers creeping up and everybody's nervous and everybody, um, wondering when someone tests positive, if someone's been exposed, I can't even remember. Michelle sent that text that my glasses keep boggling, sorry. Uh, I was gonna say email, but gave the dates and the times and whatnot, but I just thought as a refresher course, if they'd give us, uh, because we've had some positives and, uh, just thought we'd get a refresher. Hopefully, we still have our sign on our door and I still think that if people just adhere to the, I don't feel good, I have some symptoms going in it.
I get you.
But, anyway.
Yeah, so you wanna talk about kind of the current guidelines for exposing or positive?
Yep.
Okay. Julie, you want to go ahead and start? So, when somebody's positive, we do the contact tracing, and we currently still do that on our own in Humboldt County Public Health. And we do the investigation questions with them. We go back forty-eight hours prior to their test date if they're asymptomatic, or forty-eight hours prior to their symptoms onset, if they're symptomatic. And we contact trace from forty-eight hours prior. Anybody that they were within six feet of, for fifteen minutes or more. Those individuals identified as close contacts are asked to quarantine for fourteen days at home.
Fourteen days?
The virus can incubate between two to fourteen days in your body. So, that's why you could become symptomatic and positive anywhere between the two days and fourteen days. That's why it's important, even if you go the next day and get a negative test, you still have to quarantine for fourteen days. You could turn up positive.
So, my question on, uh, with our sign down here, if someone comes in and exposes, whether it's in this office, or secondary roads, or down to Sheriff's Department, how would we know? I mean, I guess that's my, my biggest fear. If I've been exposed and my wife and I are in the same house, does, does she, she, for fourteen days, we?
Only if you were positive, she's quarantined. So, that time when there's one in the household that's under the exposure situation, but everybody else is still free.
Oh, okay. Um, that kinda clears it up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. Unless that person quarantines, comes down with symptoms and becomes positive, then the rest of the household would do that same fourteen day quarantine.
Turns into a four-week vacation.
It could be, you know, during the season.
No. Well, you're thinking through the fact that if that's kind of the way you've been doing it with the contact tracing, and it's, uh, any place, work environment, whatever that is, not to pick on anyone in particular, that a person comes in and they do test positive and they do the contact tracing, and there's any other people, whether it's in an office or whatever kind of work environment it is, what you just said is, they should do a two-week quarantine. That leaves nobody left, maybe in the office, or in the workforce.
Can you use your phone, Peggy?
Well...
If we're essential workers or critical infrastructure...
But, we're considered essential workers.
Yep.
So, they fall under different guidelines.
They get, they fall under different guidelines.
If you're an essential worker or critical infrastructure and you have been exposed, you can work during those fourteen days, but that's all you get to do. And you have to wear a mask, make sure that you have no symptoms, no fevers.
And things, social distancing, all the stuff they've been doing, but...
Yeah, you just go to work and you go home. That's it, during those fourteen days.
No, no vaccination, no grocery store.
There's this disclaimer that essential workers can still go to work.
Yes, I understand.
But, if they've had someone in their work environment that did have a positive test, then they're requested that they go to work, they go home.
Yep.
They follow the safety guidelines at work, go home, stay home.
As long as they're asymptomatic, they can continue to get to work and home and that is it.
That's it, okay.
And they still have the same ability to call you guys for testing and do they come to the office and all that stuff?
They can call Public Health with questions.
Right.
But, there's a few different avenues we've got for testing in our county. Yeah, so because of, and last week when I was here, that we hadn't even dreamed this up yet, but it just because of the growth in patients in the last couple of days, um, Friday, we opened up a new testing site, the hospital by the emergency room. So, um, it's open here today at nine, um, but that is strictly an outpatient lab. If you have symptoms, you have to have symptoms for this test to be effective. So, if you are exposed and wanna be tested, that's not what we're there for. If, if you have symptoms, you can come in, have a quick swab, you'll know your results within fifteen minutes, and that way we can isolate these folks very quickly and do that contact tracing.
Thanks.
So, we're trying to, unfortunately, there is a lot of activity right now. And it's not in Humboldt County, it's in every county in Iowa. Um, I am connected to five CEOs in the close counties around us, and we're all experiencing the exact same thing. Our hospitals are full, we have COVID patients in our hospitals, and our staff are starting to become positive. So, the quicker we can get folks tested and isolated to reduce the spread from there, the better we are. It just, we're at a, we're at a critical point right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's kinda what we're, I was after, anyway. Appreciate you.
Thank you, ladies, and keep up the good work.
Good reminder.
Hopefully, we'll go back the other way as well soon. Anything else?
Thanks for your help.
My only recommendation for you guys, especially in this building, is I, I would highly recommend doing first masking for at least all your employees within this facility. You see a lot of lives. That's a decision you guys can make, but masking does reduce the spread, so...
Can I, Michelle, uh, point of reference on that, is this really probably like it's always been, that it's wearing a mask, it's more that you may not know you have it, you're protecting, spreading it, versus these masks are all long great, it's probably not as much of getting it, although it's probably some benefit, but it's more of spreading it. Is that fair to say?
I think it's a combination of both. You're, you're reducing the risk either way, going back or forth.
Well, if everyone's wearing a mask, you're not gonna have as much opportunity to spread it or get it.
Correct. It's helping you both ways.
Well, that's what it seems like the general nationwide recommendation is, any close proximity. You know, if you're outside and twenty feet away, there's not a big deal, but...
Yep. And that, see, yeah.
It's a close, and lead to your thought process of anytime you're in a more enclosed environment.
Yep.
It does make sense.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I know there's controversy on it, it's just that it's the current guideline from the CDC, so it's what we would encourage with, with businesses and with anyone right now.
Well, good luck and thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you for all of you.
Still, we got any questions, so...
Appreciate your, your loyalty and all of your hard work.
Have a good one.
Thank you, Michelle. What do we need you to do down there on the doorstep? Get both the big sign, mask required?
To require a mask, you'd have to have some kind of a resolution. You can just...
You can make a suggestion.
Yeah, you can suggest.
Masks are encouraged, or something like that.
And we do that, we have that on our door for election, for people voting, but I would have to say probably ninety, ninety-five percent of them wear their masks.
All right.
And if they come behind our counter at all, like on a Monday morning when you guys are here, we give them a mask and say, would you please put this on for us, 'cause you're coming behind the platform.
Yes.
So, um, there are a few that will refuse, and I'm not gonna force anybody to wear one that doesn't want to, because then we're gonna be calling the sheriff and having him come up, and we don't want a situation like that, so...
Yeah.
They do have rights, unless you have a full, uh, order in, in effect, yeah.
Well, the percentage is very high, and people are very anxious of the mask.
Yes, oh, yes, most definitely. We have been very fortunate, the last full week that we've been voting, there's a great majority of them that wear a mask when they come in.
Good. I'm gonna change my thoughts, 'cause I'm a little ahead and I'm not one who wears this thing very much, so...
I usually keep one under my car, and I got here and it wasn't there.
We have extras we can give, yeah, if you want one.
I always carry one in the pocket. Any, anything else for, I guess we're still on public concerns?
After you're done with public concerns, I did hear from Kerry McCarthy. He is not going to, he's gonna be scheduled for next week, so he will not be here for the nine fifteen appointment today.
Okay. Table has been told that we...
Table has been told that we...
Yep, we can do that. All right, so...
You got it, okay?
Yep. Uh, let's move on to Dean, and, uh, I'm not sure who Andrew Shillington is, but...
No, Corey, just talking to Corey, not Andrew.
Well, this type, okay. So, I just wanna make sure we weren't missing something, I'm pretty familiar with Corey, but go ahead, and this is, uh, information discussion on the canine program.
Yep. Um, we have Deputy Andrew Shillington, who's interested in becoming a canine handler for us. Um, we're working with, uh, Renee on the union stuff, and we're working with Andrew on, um, kinda guidelines to, um, when he's out and about doing his dog, 'cause they're entitled to so many hours a month for training and all that kinda stuff, so we're just trying to put the final touches on it. But, I guess we thought we should probably come to you and get your blessings on it, that we do this first before we, uh, go too far with it, so... Andrew bought the dog himself when it was a puppy. He's been training it since then, and I think it was the last week it got certified for, uh, drug and apprehension.
Yeah, drugs, drugs for sure, and he's, he, the next step is for apprehension and tracking, which is, um, the next phase in the process, which he said, you know, I think he was either gonna get it last week or this coming week, he would have it ready for that.
Yep.
So, what does that entail for costs and whatnot? I mean, he's got the dog.
He's got the dog, he paid for it. We, uh, um, went to Bagel County up there, they just, uh, um, traded their vehicle, and, and the cage that they had would fit into Andrew's vehicle, and we went up there and got it already and stuff, so it was no cost to us, they just gave it to us and stuff, 'cause they have no use for it anymore. Um, it'd be probably some vet bills and some, uh, food bills, but other than that, uh, we're gonna try and do everything by donations, so...
I think what we're hoping is that between Kent and maybe our Facebook page, we would throw something out there to see if, either between a vet's office, if you'd either be willing to donate, or to give reduced rates to do the care of the dog, and then...
Radio.
Yeah, radio. But, so we've just kinda publicized it, so maybe we have some citizens that would be willing to come in and give some donations to put towards either vet's office, bills or food, that type of stuff. I had contacted Scott Curran about insurance, ensuring the dog, and he said that it's like an application process, and so he's kinda gotten back to me and told me what it was detailed to do that. So, it sounds like that's fairly easy. And then as Dean said, because there are federal mandates and stuff, that, um, they've set forth to give canine handlers that they're entitled to a certain amount of time for training each month, because in order to be, um, the dog is required to have a minimum of sixteen hours of training each month to keep it active. And Andrew has reached out, there's a group of canine handlers for the region that meet, they're kinda based out of Garner, um, but they've got dogs that come in from multiple counties around, and they usually meet every, um, every other Wednesday, um, which is gonna be pushing it a little bit for us to get Andrew up there, but we're hoping at least get him one day a week, or one day a month that he can go up there and train, so that would be eight of his sixteen required hours knocked out. And then the other eight hours, he said he would be willing to do on his own, um, during his off-duty time, or if he can find time while he's on duty, try to get some of that stuff done, so that would be of great help to us, too. But, the biggest thing we need to run through the union is to, and, is to make sure, 'cause again, he's, um, there are federal mandates that canine handlers are entitled to get as far as, you know, compensation or something, you know, because it's not like, we all have special duties that we do, but canine handlers a little bit different. I mean, they're actually bringing the dog home, they have in-home care, they've got follow-up trainings they need to be doing, so, uh, we need to make sure we're kinda on board with, you know, to make sure that we're doing everything legit before we do that, so it's, it's gonna be a learning experience for all of us to make sure we do it and do it right, and we make sure we've got the parameters in place right from the start, and make sure he knows what he's getting into, and we know what we're obligated to provide, and to make sure it's gonna work for all of us.
I just, as long as, I mean, this isn't gonna be a seventy-five thousand dollar...
No, no, absolutely not.
All right.
Well, like I said, we're hoping, you know, people come forward and donate and stuff, which, when Andrew was a dog handler and I accounted, that's what he said he did there, he was pretty much everything was donations over there, so...
What about the cost of the training, which I'm also speaking of the training, it needs to be law enforcement certified training, if you're doing a dog for law enforcement?
Yeah, there's a, there's a deputy that's, uh, certified to be a, uh, certified dogs up in, uh, Hancock County, and he, he would do that for us, so...
Is there expense, Zach, for the training?
Not that we've been told, but it's, it's kinda with this group of canine handlers that meet every other Wednesday, that I'm kinda part of the deal when he gets in with that group, that they'll do a lot of that certification and stuff, and the yearly stuff, they can do a lot of that in-house, because he's considered a master trainer, so he can sign off on the dogs. Now, there are other training programs that Andrew could go to, um, I can't think of what the acronym is for, but there's, uh...
USPCA.
Yeah, USPCA. They, they meet, um, they have like several different training sessions throughout the state during the course of a year, so this trainer in Garner could do it, but what Andrew has said, it was, would be also good if he also went maybe every other year or something and did the USPCA, because he said that if they also sign off and give his blessing, then for court purposes, he'd even got more of a foundation to be able to say that, you know, not only does this canine handler say my dog meets the minimum standards, but also he's got the USPCA saying the same thing. So, it's just giving kinda more for court purposes, to say that the dog is really up to snuff and got everything that's required to have.
You really don't expect to incur much cost from the Sheriff's Department back to you?
No, no, I, I don't need it, no. I mean, the thing is, when, uh, when Andrew gets a new vehicle, first we'll have to get a new cage to fit that vehicle and stuff, but other than that, it should be...
At least, you know, we've had the donation of this cage, which should get us by for a couple of years, for, uh, before he would be ready for a new vehicle. So, I mean, that was a heck really awesome for when in Bagel County, just to give us this...
Yeah, it's imaginary kinda spending.
Yeah, they are.
So, the expense Dean will have would be actually hire somebody to install this cage and pack in this vehicle, so that'll be a little bit of an expense there, but...
She don't mind. You don't mind.
He says he's just gonna pick out of his own...
Well, neither, it's the way Dean is.
Yeah.
Corey, no, I'm like, the kids, you're single, so it'll be...
Well, that sounds good, and obviously, I mean, Andrew, come to, you know, Dean, Corey, you guys as a whole department, if what the request, and as a, if you're, uh, I don't wanna say needed, but be useful to have a canine?
There are times and situations where it was coming in handy to have one, I mean, I know we get, I have the public often is approaching and asking about, we need a canine, and, I mean, there's drawbacks. I mean, the, one of the drawbacks is, is that, you know, this whole vaccine, this car's gonna be tied up for dog stuff, and so we would never have a female transport to do, 'cause generally, when we transport a female prisoner, we try to have a matron. So, obviously now Andrew won't be able to do that, so he's, you know, still have to make other arrangements, so it's not gonna be, I mean, there's gonna be some, I said some drawbacks to it, but we're, you know, it's his passion, it's his, um, he really enjoys it, you know, he's, he feels that that's what he wants to do, and so it's kinda one of them things, you know, we kinda help him, help him to achieve what he wants to do, I guess, if possible, 'cause I think it could benefit us, too.
Yep.
What breed and age is this animal?
It's a one-and-a-half-year-old Dutch Shepherd.
Well, I guess I'm all...
I think that sounds like a really good idea. And did Andrew have previous dog experience in another county?
Yeah, maybe he was sent into Pennsylvania for what, twelve weeks or something, for...
Well, he's not just starting from scratch on his experience with this.
Yep.
Yeah, so he's actually a certified trainer himself, so he was able to do a lot of the training himself, you know, so as far as getting it up to this point right now, he just said that the dog is a year and a half old, it's, it's, you know, it's ready now to be deployed, and that's why he's approached us and said that, you know, he would like to see what the possibilities to do in that, so...
And obviously, he just went through the litany of the training and that, so the certification and that before it ever, on, you know, quote-unquote, active duty.
Yeah, yeah, we still got some, some work to do, and the scenes before we'll officially put him in duty or put him into action, so...
Yeah, good. Well, that's all right.
All right.
No, I think that's a really good call for addition for...
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm counting your budget, so...
Yeah, you just told us here, you know, nothing gonna incur a great amount of expense, so I don't see an issue with that.
Andrew said he would try to do everything, you know, to get donations, so we'll, we'll see what happens.
And we think between getting out to the media and throwing something on our Facebook page, we're, you know, we expect that the community will support it, and, you know, there may be some months or whatever that maybe Dean will have to pick it up, but we were, you know, we expect between dog, between food donations, vet donations, or at least to help offset a lot of that stuff, it should be relatively minimal cost, but...
Didn't you get a lot of donations before when you had the dog?
Yep.
I remember there were a couple, too, so...
Yep. Yeah, and what I'll do is, if we get donations, I'll run it through my line item as a revenue, and then just take it out of my budget, so we have a paper trail.
Paper trail of it, that'd be nice.
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for the...
Good guy, he's a duck, he's a duck.
All right, moving right along, um, we have, uh, Scott Thompson here, and basically, he's gonna try to get everything squared away...
Try.
Try, with the, uh, the base, the grant money versus, uh, money coming from that bond on radio.
Andy, I'll put a copy in your desk drawer here.
I got one.
Okay.
Yeah, next to where, I gotta give one to that one, I think he's... You're welcome.
Okay, the, the page with all the writing on it, with the most stuff on it, is each town, um, what we put in for on the grant, and then over there is how much grant money they got, which the grant money ended up being more than what we anticipated, I don't know exactly how USDA figures this, but we did get more money than we thought we were going to. Part of it is because a couple of departments put in for more stuff than what originally. Originally, the USDA told us to be conservative on this, 'cause if we went overboard, they might reject it. So, and a couple of departments did, uh, increase theirs quite a bit, and did get, did get it. You can see that Gilmore City ended up with thirty-three thousand five hundred grant money, Bradgate twenty-five thousand two hundred, Renwick thirty-two four, Boe twenty-seven eight, Livermore twenty-six thousand one hundred, Odison thirty-three hundred, Thor, where that was not eligible, and Humboldt forty-five hundred. Now, the Humb, the number on Humboldt, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's exact, it's close, nobody seemed to know, the people, I called the city office and I talked to some of the guys, nobody seemed to know what their number was. So, then where it says extras, that is the extra equipment the guys wanted to get, and so, um, well, like Gilmore, for example, on twenty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ten cents more stuff, so you add that to the difference from what they, what their grant was, would be the money they're asking for is thirty-one thousand four thirteen. Bradgate is happy with what they got, and they would have eighty-two hundred and fifty-seven. Renwick is thirty thousand two eighty-five, Boe is thirty-two five forty-nine, Livermore is thirty-three four forty-seven, Odison is eleven nine twenty-two, Thor, uh, we put in for some pagers and radios for them, 'cause we can't just leave them out, even though they didn't get a grant, so that'd be twelve eight sixty-nine, and for what Humboldt wants with what little grant they got is fifty-seven thousand four hundred and one dollars.
So, is it safe to say that when you go to the total then, which is, like you explained, the extra equipment, plus the basic, minus the grant, is it just easy figuring to say the total would be what they'd be asking for from the county?
Yes, yes. The second sheet that I gave you is the number of radios, the radios and pagers that each department is asking for. Now, a couple of these departments... Couple of these departments have ambulance services, too, so there is some extra stuff there, like Gilmore and Renwick, there is a few, uh, a couple. Gilmore had four extra pagers on theirs for their ambulance department and a, and a radio for the ambulance, and Renwick had some for their ambulance department also. So, that would be the, I think when we talked before, I think it was the day they come like to two nineteen or something, and these numbers are not set in stone, um, due to the fact that, okay, we've gotten, uh, the handhelds are higher priced than the mobiles, and I need to sit down with each department once we get it decided, what they can get, and they may say, hey, we'd rather have another mobile than a handheld, so that'll be a little bit cheaper, so it won't be exactly, um, what we tried to do is get enough radios, so each truck will have a radio, whether it be a mobile unit or a handheld, is kinda what we're, what we're looking at here. That will be, the way we got it figured here, that each truck for each department should have some kind of communication, 'cause once we switch to the new, the old system will not work, for as far as them talking to the LEC.
Right.
Now, they will be able, all the departments...
Talk to each other, but they...
Yes, all the departments, except Humboldt, are keeping their old handheld radios to communicate on the scene and can, can, that can communicate with each other, um, but Humboldt is getting all new handhelds for theirs. And, uh, the pagers are a little bit cheaper than what we originally anticipated, because now that they have switched to the new seven-hundred system, we don't have to have the dual-band pagers. When we started this a year ago, we were all gonna get new pagers and, and they would work on the old frequency until the new system came in. Well, now the new system is in, we don't need the dual-band pagers, so it'll be like a hundred dollars a pager cheaper than what, than what we originally had talked about. I did get, um, had another company quote prices on the same equipment, just to see...
Just to see how brutal it is, yeah.
No, when you say another company, it's still brutal.
It's still brutal.
Exact same equipment, same different, it's a different vendor.
Different vendor.
Just to see if the numbers are in line. I, I assume they are, but you never know. Now, you see on the internet, these pagers are advertised on the internet a lot cheaper than what we got quoted. And, and, I know the radios, I think the radios, I think the state sets the price for those radios, now they, they do charge us freight on them, and they did charge us, uh, uh, setup charges and some other things on there that were, weren't originally, once we finally got the quotes, uh, for them, so, and, and every, every city has been approved on their grants. So, all we're waiting for now is, and okay to, to go ahead and, you know, to go ahead and to see where we're at and go ahead with whatever they're gonna order.
Okay.
What's Pocahontas County, are they tipping in any on yours?
Not that I know of, no. I haven't heard that they were, anyway, no. I don't know if they've ever been approached on it, even, Dave, I don't, um, as far as I know, Pocahontas is not switching theirs as of now anyway, so I don't, I, I don't believe they have...
Did I, did I miss the part where you looked on the internet? You did look on the internet and see how the prices compared, and say there's a stabbing a little bit on the pagers, but everything else is somewhat close? Is that, was that what I had to get in the drift?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and the, a couple of the guys on different private departments have called, uh, have called Unication, the company that, that sells these pagers, these are not... These are not Motorola, they're Unication. Motorola doesn't make a pager for this, so everything is going with Unication. And, uh, one guy called the factory and he said, here's the biggest distributor there is. And he called him and his prices were quite a bit cheaper than what they were, so. Like I said, I asked, uh, Archon out of Algonah is working with another distributor now and can get to you the Motorola radios and the pagers. And I asked him to give us a quote just to see, you know, where we're at. You know, if they're, if they're twenty dollars a pager or something, if they're, you know, you were, when you're talking a hundred and twenty-seven page, well, Humboldt's already got theirs, they've already ordered theirs and, and bought, or they, I don't know if they have them yet or not, but they are, they've already ordered theirs a month ago or so.
Okay.
So there'd be a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and five pagers. Well, you'd think if you order a hundred and five pagers for somebody, they would give you some kind of.
They give you kind of a break account.
Yeah.
But long story short, the total request was for two nineteen something and you're.
Two eighteen one forty-six thirty.
No, I know, but what you're, that was what you requested?
Yes.
When we did the.
Originally I think it was two nineteen.
Yeah, so we're under what we, your request was, so.
Yeah.
If they change the price, we might save a little here or there.
Yeah. And, and like you say, it won't be any more than that, two eighteen, because if anything, some of these handhelds we have down, some of these I talked to would rather go with mobiles. So, um, and pager wise, uh, you know, we should be sitting good on pagers. Uh, I know that, uh, some of the ambulance crew, or I think in, in Renwick, some of their ambulance has gotten some pagers, so we may even have a couple less pagers than what we originally, uh, but I, I didn't want to make this short and then come back and say, hey, we need ten more. I'd rather tell you, we got too much on here to come back and, and say, uh, uh, you know, hey, we, we didn't need everything that.
We requested two nineteen and their bill's going to be about two thirty-five.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Good. Appreciate it.
Well, I just thought, you know, but we've discussed this, but I really appreciate Scott.
Yeah, it clears it up as well.
Do deal with this. And this is a nice breakdown, you know, whatever amount of time you had to spend on it, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Well, Linda, thank you.
We were a little bit.
Linda actually didn't do that. Josh Lippold, I did this.
Well, okay, thank you.
Now, you know, and I'll just, as it is, I mean, this was, other counties have done similar when they've got the new radio systems. They've got their departments up to, up to speed, up and running with the basic equipment. Does this seem fair and right to everybody? I mean, granted, uh, the other departments, which have very small budgets because they're very small departments, you know, you get down to Humboldt, part of the reasoning, there's grant protocol, they didn't get much.
Yeah, because they're a bigger.
Community, bigger departments, bigger budget, however they look at it. And, you know, the difference was, you know, under twenty-three to begin with, they requested the extra that Scott pointed out. You know, they came up with a total county money, if you will, donation towards it of one over fifty-seven. Uh, you know, my question is, is that, is that fair to everyone else as well? I mean, this is kind of getting everybody really up and running. And I just clarify, probably almost to a department, over time, they will add to.
Oh, yes.
They will add to this equipment.
Yes.
So.
This, this will get them by.
Get them started.
It'll get them started, yes. And they can, once the pandemic is over, so they can start doing their fundraisers and, and nobody's been able to do any of their fundraisers.
No, they haven't.
The little departments that depend on their fundraisers are, are tricky.
Yeah.
It's a big thing.
Yeah.
And all these guys are volunteering their time.
Right.
So you gotta give them equipment to work with.
So I mean, just wanted to see it literally in black and white and clamped against the roof, putting it in black and white. Does this make sense to everyone as far as, then we know, we had talked about, and it, it is a breakdown for department. They're going to go individually so we can keep track.
Yep. And I have, uh, I talk to USDA probably twice a week for the last, how many months, trying to see where everybody's at. Uh, I finally had them send me all the paperwork that the cities needed to do and got everything done for everybody. And I need Bradgate and Boe, I need a signature on their tax ID or something for that. I have gotten the quotes from Fort Dodge on it, so we knew exactly what the numbers would be from them, so we can go. Once we get the go-ahead and we figure out that they are ripping us on them, um, all I have to do is take all the paperwork to the USDA and the USDA, once they show that it has been paid for, the USDA will reimburse the cities the money that they, they put out.
Okay.
So. So they need the grant money first?
Yes. Well, they need what.
I think you said that backwards.
Yeah.
They need the bond money first.
Yes, exactly.
So they can buy them and then they, then they get the grant money reimbursed.
Once, once they show.
Typically all grant money.
That question came up, yes, a week or two ago.
Once they show that Gilmore City has paid, um, forty-one thousand seven hundred, or thirty-three five, whatever their grant is, and, and we have to take pictures of the equipment to show them that, yes, it is there, so we'll get the equip. I will personally go down to Fort Dodge and load all the equipment up and distribute it, so everybody gets the right stuff at the right place. And we'll take pictures and give it, hand-deliver it to the USDA to make sure that everybody gets everything done as soon as possible.
Okay.
USDA said with probably within a few days, they would have their money to the, to the cities.
Okay, good. Sounds good.
They will request the payment in full before the grant money's released or?
Yes. They, they only, um, whatever.
The cities have to pull it out of their funds and then get it reimbursed to them.
Right.
Their portion, you know.
Okay, so now this, this work for the cities to know.
That's, that, that is the question we got, like, okay, like say Odison, they'll have to come up with, uh, ninety-seven hundred thirty-one dollars and ten cents. And they, they will get back thirty-three hundred out of that. Yes, that is, that is the question they have, is some of these little departments don't have, or little towns do not have extra money laying around to chuck out that kind of money. What they were asking is if the supervisor, the grant, the money we get from the supervisors will go pay off this portion and that will be more than what the grant is, or that'll be what the grant, more than what the grant money is, so that, then they can get a paid receipt and show it to the USDA. And then the USDA will give them their money and then they will write a check to Electronic Engineering or whoever we get them from. And then it'll be all, everything will be all squared away.
So essentially, the small, the towns are going to need the grant money prior, or excuse me, the bond money.
Bond money.
Money from the county, from the bond, disposed to them to get the equipment to get the grant money.
Uh-huh.
And I'm not sure how, how that's working is, are you guys writing a check to Electronic Engineering? Are you writing checks to each town or?
That's been the question, that's why.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine writing the check to Electronic Engineering.
Okay, that would, that would work great.
Is that good with you Peggy to do it separately?
I imagine as long as we've got the paperwork to back it up, um.
Or would it be easier for them to go to the cities?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll do it.
But we don't have to, we can.
No.
I'd rather do the paper trail.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
We gotta do a paper trail.
Yeah. My question is going to be, how quickly are we going to want this done? Um, to spend out two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, we're going to have to have a budget amendment again. We just got more scheduled for the ninth, but it's too late because that publication went to the newspaper a week ago. So in order to spend that money out, you don't have anything budgeted anywhere to spend that. I didn't realize it was coming this quick.
Oh, I see.
When I said we had to get them together, or how it was going to be taken out, I didn't know the details.
The bond money.
You would use the bond money we need to budget that?
We have to have a budget line item to pay a check out. Whether it's to Electronic Engineering or whether it's to the city. You've got to have a budget line amount, otherwise you're going to have a big minus of two hundred and eighteen thousand in the budget with nothing to cover.
So the bond money, nothing really comes out of it directly. It has to be put into an account, so to speak.
Yeah.
Which this process takes about two weeks, doesn't it?
Yeah, I didn't know how quickly everybody.
Yeah, and then while we get through this week here.
The radios and pagers they're saying are take two to three weeks to get, and then it takes them a while to program them. And then they said they would give us thirty to sixty days to pay for it.
All right. Well, we'll give you our blessing to go ahead and get stuff ordered, they put it that way. And then we'll, by that time, we should be able to have the money moved and categorized.
Actually, when do we, when do they release the, uh, bond money to get put in these accounts?
It's already there.
It's already there.
The, the twenty-ninth when we sign the papers, everything got positive.
It's, it's available.
Yep.
We just need to have a budget amendment to put it.
Into an account.
Has to be, yeah.
Can we then do that, what we know, where that money is going to go when we do that amendment? Because.
That way you wouldn't.
We're probably going to have to do that anyway then.
Yep, I just figured it was going to be a little.
Probably.
Yeah, well, it sounds like we got sixty days to get it done, so.
Which is good because a week and a week after is going to be extremely busy.
And before we can order these, I gotta get everybody together at one time and decide exactly what they want for equipment, what frequencies they want in their radios, because like Gilmore City is going to want like Pocahontas in there, uh, Boe will want like West Van Pala Alta County in there, uh, Wright County, you know, so we're going to have to sit down and figure out things and, um, once we, you know, first thing we'll do is figure out who wants what equipment. And then, then we need to sit down, so it'll be probably a week or two before we get them ordered anyway.
Okay.
How soon can we schedule a budget amendment?
Three weeks from now, be better timing?
Does it involve the publication, that's the one do we set a date for that?
It's going to be probably more than that.
About the third.
Um, I don't even want to address it till we get through the election and the council, you guys. There's just too much to get ready. I can't, I can't.
Yeah.
I can't put a vote together.
But I mean, the six, we'll be able to get it done in time for the sixty days, though.
Yes. It can be done, it's just going to take a little, as long as they're not immediately needing it, we'll be okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to, it'll take a while, yeah.
All right.
Or everything's okay on like all over.
Yeah, I believe so.
Everybody to see us. And I think he was a pretty clear explanation and.
Yep.
I just know when the meeting is with all of them and one of us could be there to.
Okay.
Answer questions.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I'd rather ask them, hear it from you guys in case, and then I won't be the bad guy.
Well, it should be pretty self-explanatory with this particular, but we had to look. How much does a life cost, you know?
Yeah.
This is a safety, it's big.
All right.
Hey Bruce, the other guy I didn't catch was the request about was two nineteen, uh, two hundred and eighty-five, but I didn't catch what, what the actual, they thought the actual.
Right now, the, on their sheet, it's two eighteen one four six point three oh.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, is there any other question for Scott? Always here.
Appreciate.
Now, you've got a clarification. I get you that, because I know you were talking, you've been kicking, I just thought.
I'm going to run this by you one more time, just to make sure it's clear in my head. When you're using the city of Odison as an example.
Okay.
Uh, their, their total is eleven thousand nine twenty-two. They got, uh, the grant, the difference, and the extra. But that, but they're, they're wanting, are they wanting us to pay the grant money upfront too?
Yes.
Now, do you guys understand that? Okay. I just want to make sure that we're paying the grant money and the bond and the difference upfront and then they'll reimburse the county when they get the grant money.
No, they won't, no. No, you won't need to pay, you won't need to pay their grant money upfront. Your.
I, I, okay.
The bond money that you pay will be more than enough to.
Get stuff paid.
Get stuff, so the, uh, that'll show, uh, that has been paid for to the USDA.
Okay.
And then.
Electronic Engineering's going to carry the.
Verification, yes. Okay, verification, so if nothing changes, we hope maybe it even goes down, we have rerun the numbers. Essentially, uh, would we, the county from that bond money be paying what's underneath the total?
Yes.
Upfront?
Yes.
And then like, when they get a grant, finish the balance. Because I figured how this is figured.
Yep.
So those numbers, within reason, would be what they would have to get.
Yep.
Prior to the.
And then that way we'll show a paid balance and, to them and they can take the receipt to USDA, which I will get them all together and take them all in as one and, and give them to them and make sure that.
Okay.
Because otherwise, the way it's been going, well, we got a meeting next month, well, they're going to know if we're going to do it now. Yeah. So to get, to get that done, um, Odison only put in, originally was going to put in for more than that for grant money, but they were afraid that we might not get money from the supervisors and they said that they could not come up with the difference. So that's why they, that's why theirs is so low.
Uh-huh.
But essentially, using Odison as a reference, that are eleven thousand nine twenty-two sixty, that would be the amount, as Rick mentioned, that they will get.
Right.
Right up front. All these amounts are the upfront. The balance will be the grant money, which will go directly.
To Electronic Engineering.
From the USDA grant.
Okay, all right.
All right, perfect.
We'll let you lead, yeah.
How is the county going to have their paper trail? Is each city going to, um, give it its voice to the county then, let, you have some kind of a paper trail though for the difference?
I don't have to do that, I can take. I can take this page and just highlight each city and, and say that's how much I'm going to pay each one. You're like for Gilmore, I can take and just highlight the Gilmore line, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, it's like looking in a mirror, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how to get this. I will make sure and email these to you so you'll have a better look at it. I'm having a few issues with my email, that is why you didn't get some documents this time. Um, we have Microsoft looking at it, so hopefully it will be fixed today.
Well, Ken, I'm happy as long as you are, Peggy, I just want to make sure that you're covered for what you need for a paper trail.
Yeah, I think this will be fine, it's a great, um, compilation of everything together. And I can just highlight each city and do each one separately and add that to our claim and.
And when we're all sent in, I will give you a new one of those for the exact.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, that should work. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just clear this up, all right.
Thank you.
Stay safe, thanks Scott.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, before Ben nods off, we're going to have.
There he is.
There he is. Uh, with the items he has listed here.
You guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Morning, uh, I've got three things on the agenda today. Uh, the first is to approve a funding agreement with the Iowa DOT for project, uh, the ROS swap parents, D two. This is, uh, the Lone Tree Arch, uh, down, uh, southern end of Eastern Township. This is scheduled for, uh, I'm looking at letting it probably a year from now.
So it'll probably be for twenty-two then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the funding agreement that Iowa DOT for the project mentioned.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Uh, carry.
The second item that I've got is to approve the application work in the county right away from Midland Power at twenty-seven eighty-seven two hundred and tenth Street, just, uh, two acreage, they're looking at fouring under the Farm Road, uh, to, I guess, get access to two acreage.
I make a motion to approve the application work in the right away from Midway, or Midland Power at twenty-seven eighty-seven two hundred and tenth Street.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Remember seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold, carry.
The last item that I have is to approve application work in the county right away from Mid American. This is, uh, just west of the intersection of Iowa Avenue and two hundred, uh, heading towards Rufflin. Uh, this is so that they have the ability to power back to town.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the work in right away for Mid American at Iowa Avenue and two hundred street.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All? Carry it.
I, I have the originals in there for Eric and, uh, for their signatures. Uh, Eric, if one of this is done, you just wanna stop and drop it off.
Yep, I'll stop, I'll drop them off on the way home, then I'll sign them.
Okay.
I don't, I haven't signed them yet.
Oh, well, they will be.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure I sign them all the right places.
Okay, and I'll get them signed and get them back to you.
All right.
Anything else for, uh, for the, for secondary roads?
I don't think so.
Nope.
Nope. You all right there? Everything else staying in? For you, Ben?
Yeah, uh, putting in cell vents and, uh, finishing up some, uh, bar driveways and, uh, woodwork.
Okay.
All right, all right, thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll pass time, but we'll move, I, do we have to go into drainage on this one?
Yeah, it looks like it.
I'm making. Go into drainage.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, we're in drainage.
Do you guys want a copy of these?
Yes, yes, please.
And one here.
I can go see if it's on.
I'm gonna copy all.
Hello, Rick.
Hello, Bruce.
I'm gonna go in.
Rick!
Good.
Good to see ya.
Good to see you. Please listen to this.
Yeah, well, we're all being cautious these days.
Hi there.
I was gonna say.
Oh, okay.
If that's the case, I should start online.
No, just making sure I'm not missing anything pertaining to this. All right, so, we have the, uh, we're just, drainage district number thirty-five branch C, we have the presentation of the revised as-built plan.
Yes, I just gave copies to Arlen and Dial to send it to Dial electronically. Um, it's quite an effort, uh, from a contractor. I do wanna thank Dial and Harland for their help with this. They've been very helpful with the entire project, all the way through from the very beginning, um, making it still a lot better than they could have. Um, I gave Trish copies earlier. Uh, we do have it electronically, so we can send it to anybody that way. I do have an extra copy with me today yet, if anybody wants that. Um, yeah, I don't know unless it's your district, it's probably not, it's a good deal for you, but. Absolutely no thought of targeting for any of this. It's, every once in a while you come across something you wanna revise your specs for, and this is one of those.
Uh-huh.
Where my latest thought is that we give the information from the contractor monthly, minimum, so that we're not very far ahead of that. Um, we, we haven't run into it before, which typically works out.
Good to hear.
Uh, so this was an exception, but again, it gives us another opportunity, opportunity to update our specifications, so that's what we'll be doing.
I have a question, Rick.
Yeah.
When you say update or get them monthly, my question would be, why couldn't we do, if, let's just say, if we did it in same quarters? If the thing was, say, uh, twenty-five percent burn, we, we had to have twenty-five percent of the as-built in her, somebody's hands.
Yes.
Somebody that we know would, we have the ability to get them.
Yes.
And it goes to fifty, seventy-five, and then when it's completely done, they're done.
Yes.
But I, I, I just think that when this thing got stretched out, as long as it got stretched out, and we, we all had our hands in it.
Oh, yeah.
But it was just, I, I, I think we gotta figure out a way to make it work better. That's my opinion.
Absolutely, I agree. Whatever system we use, that's a reasonable way to do it. I just look in a calendar like, like, what's monthly or something, it's just something you every, did, did every month, other than on progress. But we're doing pay estimates regularly, and that tells us how far along we are.
And there, there's an opportunity. You don't get paid to have the information up to that point.
That's my.
I like the idea, yes, and that's part of the wording we'll include in there.
Yeah.
Perhaps, perhaps we do it for every pay estimate. I was thinking, um, before we finalize it out, we have it, but that could be too late.
Yeah, then, by then it's too late.
Yeah.
And then they're already covered up and the board knows where they're at.
Exactly, exactly.
And if the guy ain't getting paid, he's gonna pay a little more attention.
Oh, 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 yeah, amazing how that works.
Well, that's my thought.
Yeah.
I, I just, we, there's gotta be some way to, to make us all be able to sit in the same room without being PO'd.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, Jacobson Westford's been around fifty years. I've been there thirty-seven of those years. And the reason is, we try and do quality work at a reasonable cost, and we, we don't wanna lose out on, on Humboldt. Humboldt's in Wright County, very progressive. Um, we just appreciate consideration again for anything that comes up. Um, yeah, we wanna, we wanna be involved here a lot longer. I'm not ready to hang it up yet. Some people think maybe I should, but, uh, no, I, I, good history here and wanna continue.
Okay.
So we've, all the landowners get a copy?
No, they can.
They can, and they can either get a hard copy or. Electronically?
No, I don't have it electronically.
I'll, I'll have, I can give it to you, hopefully.
Someone requested Dial and, uh, Harland have.
They have hard copies, yeah.
So.
Trish has the hard copy.
Just has other landowners want a hard copy.
Very good. I'll find one. I usually do.
Well, me, you two folks are here, Dial and Harland. Uh, are you satisfied with where this all got finalized there, with that done?
Everything, everything looks good and accurate, as far as you know.
I've been in contact with Jason under there, and he was helping, dug up the connections and stuff, and, and he sent them to me, and I've made comments and they revised them, and I think, uh, I think we got it right now and everything, and King got there, and quite honestly, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing there. God, they came up to do the eighteen and all, and it's gone. Um, so, uh, Jason's great in getting things done and, and following, following up, and I think that it's here. The only thing I would suggest is, um, you know, I don't know if you have a digital thing, system to, for all the county tile that's in the county. I mean, there's names and values that are buried out there, and I think if there's a way to have shape files brought in to the county, the pictures attached, anytime anybody does anything on your county tile, that you have a, a photograph as well as a TCS location, I think that'd be, uh, something the county needs to look at if, if it's not, not there already.
Mm-huh.
You know where snow piles are and everything, and that's great and important, but you can see that in snow is temporary. These tiles are ten years old and, and they're buried.
Yeah, and when people die, they forget where they're at.
Yeah, I mean, we're all gonna be gone, and there's, the tiles are gonna be here, and it'd be nice if they could come in and know what's been done and buried.
So after one growing season, did you, we didn't develop any sink holes or any that you found?
I haven't seen any holes anywhere on anything.
So everything looked, looked like it's working properly?
Uh, I'll give King credit. I think they let's did a, a good job of laying the pipe, and that's the, you know, the rest of the stuff we can figure out, or get, get done, but the pipe, I think they did a good job. Rick was no better than me, but I think they did a good job of, of laying pipe and, and, um, it's, the water we did have run through it, goes through good, so.
Okay.
Good, that's what we put it in there for.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, we got, there's a lot of tile in his ground, and this, this'll just give that a really, really good outlet. Should see the big difference in a way here.
I'm not saying anything, but right now, we looking for that little more moisture as opposed to what we just, we went from one extreme, starting this project, wetter than wet, and then went through the second year of it, and now we can't find any moisture, so.
Yeah.
One, one extreme to the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a, it's been an unusual time in many ways.
Well, we appreciate Dial and, and Harland and, and the rest of the gang that come in here. We appreciate your guys' patience, cause you were probably more patient than what we were.
Well, I, I give the board a lot of credit for staying on top of this and, and we were willing to stay at it, even though we've been in here a lot of times, it was kind of a pain in the butt, but I think the project coming up fine, and, and thanks for your guys' support and everything you've, you've done, so.
Well, that's, uh, literally and technically what we're here for, those trust funds, and I think it's good conversation, you know, you learned from this.
And like you say, every drainage project, I've learned something. You, you just, everyone's different. There's always little quirks that come up, and it's just amazing how you think, oh, this should be simple. They never are when they start digging in the ground.
This one had its fair share of, of course.
Yeah, it did.
But the, the thing is, getting to this as-built thing, which the landowners are satisfied with, it is that, what Dial brought up, it's that record. I mean, it's to have that record, you know, obviously it's a district, so the district has it on file, but for the landowners due for future, and I like your comment, um, and I know we've requested it, but we can't enforce it, if especially any tile that's hooked into district systems. It'd be nice to have that recorded. I don't think we can legally force them. We do, of course, record all drainage district projects, but that is a great idea, Dial, and I know that you guys particularly, and a lot of landowners, you know, they keep track when they tile, they have records. It would be nice if there was ever a way to share those into the drainage district files, so that they, they'd be a record, you know, public record as well, but, I mean, we've requested it, but we can't enforce it, so.
The more recent projects, we have a sheet that gives the coordinates of every tile connection, and that will be part of your information here at the courthouse if you run that out.
Even the private connections with that.
As long as we're involved at all, yes.
That's a good, good, uh, information.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
I don't have background noise here.
Maybe if you would take the idea that Dial had and maybe let everyone know that that would be a, a good help for everyone. I don't know if the landowners all know that if you would bring in your private tile maps for Trish to record, it would be helpful down the line.
Yes.
Very much so.
Maybe we can put something out on that.
Maybe accidentally something might show up in the newspaper, who knows? But you guys just left the plans over, and you're satisfied with all those?
Yeah, I think we got it. Everything's nice.
Good, good deal. Thanks, Rick, for clearing it up.
Oh, I apologize for all this. This project has been kind of edgy from the beginning, and, and nobody more delighted than me to be through us and move on, so.
Okay.
Well, now we call Dean and tell him to take that, pull you over every time you come through Humboldt County off. I'm teasing, Rick.
Well, I'm teasing.
You're not teasing, are you?
I'm teasing you.
Yeah, like, yeah, we are gonna.
We still, we still, like, yeah, I mean, it's one of them deals that everybody was a little edgy, and I, I, I can't even be honest, tell you what year this project was, did they put it out?
Never why.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah.
That's when I signed the paper.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
So we've almost all gotten hold over this project.
It may have been the first project we wrote up in two thousand seventeen, cause it's seventeen zero zero two.
I was gonna say, I thought it was cold and windy that day.
It would've been in January, probably.
Yeah. Well, no wonder.
It ain't.
Anything else in regards to the DD thirty-five branch C of the as-built? Sounds like a pretty good, uh, resolution there. Uh.
Do we make a motion to accept them as one?
We have to, yeah, yeah.
Do we need to make a motion to accept them as built, as presented?
Revised.
Revised, I would make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All? They are accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, hey, we are in drainage, so anything else drainage related from drainage clerk?
I got letters sent out. We got from last time, and we see Dave has resolved.
Sure, did you wanna mention anything on that, Dave?
I went out and looked at it. In fact, I was up there twice that day. Uh, Friday, I think it was, but, uh, they had brought it back by eight hundred feet, I suppose, uh, from the tile where they connected into the, the other tile. They capped it. They were down about ten feet, and it was understanding in the bottom of the hole. And, uh, I talked to Kevin, and he said that his dad always told him there was a tile that ran through that hillside, and he said that, uh, they'll come up to him and tell him, and he said, well, go ahead and cut through there. But he says, we stopped and capped it, since we found out that it was crossing districts.
Okay.
I believe, I'm sitting at the place, I'm looking both ways, I believe they're back in the district. They should be right back then.
Fine.
So Kevin was talking about redoing the other side and putting the rest station in. He's already got the field filed.
Okay.
Well, we got that put to bed then.
Yep.
And I do, while we all have copies, cause I forwarded the information, we do have a GPS coordinate that.
For that.
Where that cap is, and I will get that to you. At least you can record that. Speaking of recording data, we have, not where we know right where it is. We're not different for it.
Be nice, everybody filed private tiles, we knew that it did connect into the county tile.
Yep.
Be nice to know where those connections are at.
It would, for everybody's sake.
Yeah, then there would be no question.
For everybody's sake. Anything else drainage related, means we're in drainage?
Just wanna be sure you guys know a call anytime, no charge for a phone call. We're extremely glad they give any advice we can.
All righty.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
I think we're good.
Okay.
We're good.
Most of the.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, we are all good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Derek, put that, let it be. Fresh, I, well, I can wait. We should, we've got a lot left of it. I know you're really busy, but I had a four quarter, but I'll wait till we get down here, run that by you quick.
Okay.
Okay, I think I need to go home.
That's fine, we're just on our phone.
I think I got a few things here, not too.
Andy, go on, mine. Yep, okay, you're fine.
So if you guys don't mind.
No, no.
You're gonna step off.
Do you have any, any further report?
Uh.
The Dave.
Yeah, I went to that housing meeting that Dave went, and that was, that was about it.
Dave will make sure that gets loaded.
Okay.
Yeah, I see you with.
Yeah, see. So, my wife, she's, she don't handle it too well, so.
Will you come tomorrow night?
What's that?
You're coming tomorrow night?
Yes, yeah, I'm coming, I'm gonna run tallies, I guess, at eight forty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, she, I got the boat and then the good one.
Okay, I don't know for sure where I'm going, I thought I was going to boat and everything.
Boat, sex.
But, but it might change.
Maybe you and I are going together.
Maybe it got changed, too, so.
She told me first that I was going to the other morning, but now she came back, I didn't see anybody, it's ready.
She'll come here first, she told me to be there at eight forty-five and, uh, then she sent me on my merry way. Appreciate you guys.
Yep, no, we'll have to do something, if you want, number next, no, we, we got a.
Yeah, we see you.
Alright, thanks, Rick.
Pretty good, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we put off Sandy on the phone, well, even if she didn't, I guess we're still. Okay, everything's good on those?
Yes.
I'll drop those off with Ben, so he's got that taken care of. Are you good to go? We'll just wrap this up.
Uh huh.
Alright, so now moving down, we need to approve liquor license applications to River Valley Orchards and Wine.
Everything is in order, they submitted their liquor license for renewal, it's a Lily wine permit, native wine, class C, native wine.
Everything's in order and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we see the copy just sign somewhere here, or Eric?
Uh, all those, motion carried. Just sign it, let's stamp it or anything or?
Nope.
Nope, just sign it, okay. Alright, uh, now we need to accept the place on file, a community family resources and the Richmond Center audit report as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
And I just put a copy on the table there. Trish has probably seen it already.
I would tell you that I got the chance to listen to that twice in the financial meeting and in the, the overall meeting and everything is moving forward and they have a lot of, seem to be doing a lot of work down there, so unfortunately. That's not a good thing, but I guess it's a good thing that we have it. So I would make that motion to accept the CFR's and Richmond Center's audit report for June thirtieth.
I'll second.
Hey, first second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, accepted. Hey, we have committee reports.
Only thing I had for the week was I had Ed Mello on Tuesday night, the, the twenty-seventh. And that was all pretty quick.
Sandy?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know you were waiting for me. Okay, you're not gonna see because I managed to go to my calendar, okay? Alright, um, I had a busy week last week. Um, Wednesday the twenty-eighth, in the morning, we had our regular governing CSS meeting. Um, nothing really new to report there as far as the, the actual meeting and, and, um, we're still all trying to figure out if, uh, we can, um, of course, we've got the, the CSS board's willingness to, um, go to the legislature and try to get the contiguous rule changed, you know, so see if we can stay with CSS. Um, so since Sarah Gordon did, um, did accept it in the CICS, we are open. So, uh, you know, we're, if, if we can't get that contiguous rule to change, um, then we will all be moving to, you know, New Mental Health region. Um, at New, we had a, uh, another Zoom meeting, and these are all Zoom meetings for County Social Services for Children's Behavior, I'm on that advisory committee. And, um, that was really interesting, it's just more of us talking about what we're, by July twenty twenty-one, we have to have certain, um, core services in place for, um, children. And then we all know that if we can help the children when they're younger and just alleviate more problems, um, down the road when they are, um, uh, older. And so we're working on, um, getting, um, some services in place, um, and things like that. Uh, then also on that day, day the twenty-eighth, we also have the Rolling Hills Government, Government meeting. Um, we were accepting it in Rolling Hill, uh, so we do have a region to go into, uh, if we are actually forced to change, um, regions for the mental health. So, uh, that is a good feeling that we've got that done, um, and that that will, will happen. Uh, we're still hoping that we can get the legislators to change the contiguous rule because this doesn't just affect our region, it, it affects all regions. We can, if one county or two counties like in case of, of us that want to change a law and it affected twenty-two other counties, uh, it can happen in any other region too, so we're hoping that that contiguous will change. Um, then on the twenty-ninth, I had an Iowa workforce development, um, Region Five, a Zoom meeting. Uh, we met with, uh, the new, um, uh, board. Uh, we, as you all know, we had to go and we had everything changed and getting it placed, uh, by, um, December. So we missed our first, um, meeting with the board, uh, the new board, there's only three members out of nineteen, um, that were from the old board. I think we've got a really good board, uh, that works with disabilities, um, dislocated workers, um, and then, um, uh, youth also. And then the youth try to help us then, you know, to get training and get jobs, uh, get funding and that, so. Uh, Doug Bailey has been our, um, chair and has done a great job in this, but doesn't hire at the end of this year, so, uh, next year's gonna be a lot of fun. Trying to get those things to go again because January twenty-one is the big, the big date, um, to make sure that we get everything in place, uh, for this. Um, okay, and then the thirtieth, on Saturday, I also had a Zoom, um, conference call that was the state one for Iowa workforce development and that again was just going over the, uh, deadlines that we have to meet, the funding and the money, how that's gonna be dispersed because of all that stuff, even though we had to been working on this all this year, still hasn't been figured out and they're still, um, uh, I'm trying to find the thing that says it's still not. There's, we're still waiting on the state to, um, it doesn't matter. Uh, but anyway, that's it, that's all I had.
That's it?
Yes, that's it.
Monday I had a VA meeting, group claims down there. Uh, Wednesday, Rick and I both went to the housing meeting and they gave us a presentation, we had so many land homes there. There's a flyer, um, they can build a thousand, what was that? Thousand twenty-five feet square feet living, uh, three bedroom, two bath, two car garage, around a hundred and sixty-nine nine, a hundred and seventy thousand. And it would be a starter home. And, uh, they like to do four or five of them at a time because then they can get the price down, keep it down. Contractors can come in, dig the basements, that's an unfinished basement. If the basement is available, if it's light out on West River Drive out there, they'll have to go without a basement and be a slat one. Um, it comes with washer, dryer, refrigerator, stove, microwave, all included in it. So, it's a pretty good deal, it looks like to me. We've been, in, in looking into homes and stuff to put in some low income housing, like say this would be a starter home for somebody just starting out. Uh, and I left there and went to Zoom meeting with Midas. And, uh, that was on Wednesday. Uh, Thursday I went up to Hardy, looked at the drainage up there we had and I made two trips up there looking at it, talking to the landowners and the people around there, so that's all I had.
Peggy, that was Rick's only meeting, he said, was that housing meeting?
Okay.
Okay, on, uh, Monday the twenty-sixth, I had a building families meeting that afternoon via Zoom. That was my only official meeting. So you have any other tidbits of information, Peggy?
I certainly do, I need, um, I have Dave sign this, the Homeward Housing is, is asking for their allocation. So I thought it better that a supervisor signed that. We do have a new report of a claim from company Nurse, I'll let you guys look at that, that is confidential. Make sure and get it back to me. We received a check, uh, from IMWCA for a Workman's Con audit, uh, three hundred eighty-nine dollars, so we put it into the general fund. Um, the unions did vote as far as the four unions within the county. The courthouse jailers, sheriff deputies union passed and the public safety, uh, what dispatchers union passed. The assessors office or conference board on secondary road did not. So I'm just letting you know the results of the voting, there were not enough votes in either one of those two units to pass, um, for the union contracts. I have been in touch with Renee, um, rather briefly, but she said we'll be very busy from here on out, um, putting together changes to the employee manual, because we've been working on that, to incorporate these new groups into there because they won't be covered by the union contract and when it expires.
So they are out of the union then, them two?
Unless I hear differently, but from the total death in the, of the vote, um, they didn't have enough. That's all I got.
And you wanna stay today and tomorrow, I'll say what you said.
I'd like to remind everybody, please be safe when you go to the polls if you don't have a mask. We do have some available at the polls that, just ask for one. Um, if you do have a black pin, bring it with you, if you don't, we'll supply some. But we've been using so many of them for absentee, uh, we may go have a shortage on pins at the polling places. So please, if you have a black pin of your own, um, because we don't like to share pins anymore, we try not to share anything. Um, and be safe, be careful if you're not feeling well. We're doing drive up at the polls, you can pull up in your vehicle. Someone will come out to you with a ballot, a clipboard, everything you need. You can do it all in your car, hand it back to them, they'll take it right in the polling place and vote it for you. They just slide it in the machine, the machine counts it, that's all they have to do, they won't even look at it. They'll just slip it in there and then you're all done. So you still get to vote, you still have that right, but if you're, uh, in quarantine, if you have active COVID, you can vote, but please, let's do it from your car. We would like to see you have a mask on and possibly gloves to help protect yourself and protect our polling place workers. And they will also have a mask and gloves on to protect you. So we can get through this, um, we can have a successful election, but we all have to do it together.
Peggy, I had someone ask me, like, down at the fairgrounds, if there's a whole bunch of cars out there, they're assuming that they'll be spaced out inside of the building or are they gonna be waiting outside? I said, I just don't know.
Um, we will put as many inside as we can with a six foot distancing.
It's a nice, supposed to be a nice day.
Yeah, but if it's nice outside, we will have the line go out the door, yes.
That was their question is, well, what if we have to stand, I said, I can't, we don't know what the timeframe is.
And it's your choice if you want to stand or not, maybe you came in a really busy time. Maybe everybody's voting at lunchtime or everybody's voting at supper time, those tend to be busier times. Try to come some other time during the day, um, you know, or go a little later at night or something when the crowds aren't quite so busy.
And repeat the hours?
The polls are open from seven in the morning until nine at night.
Seven AM to nine?
Yes.
And please be patient.
Yes, please be patient, they, it takes a while to get you checked in and get the, the items issued to you that you need to have. So please, the process is the same for everybody, if you're a brand new, uh, registering to vote, you know, what we call same day registration, it's gonna take you a little more time. And you're gonna need to bring your driver's license, don't forget that. And if you're same day registration, you have to have some other piece of identity, um, whether it be a credit card bill or a utility bill or something that has your new address on it or your address where you're currently at, that you're registering at. So, um, it'll take them a little while to do those and, and do them properly, so please be patient with us.
Awesome.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions, they can call us, we answer all questions.
Does no, anything else from anybody?
Will they still be able to come up here tomorrow and vote or do they have to go to their polling place?
Tomorrow they have to go to their polling places, they can't go here. But please, those of you who have ballots still out there that you haven't sent back yet, um, I would encourage you not to put them in the mail, to please either drop them in our drop box out front or bring them into the office and just hand them to the office staff. It's very important that if you want your vote to count, that it be here soon, very soon. So if you put it in the mail, it could take up to a week, maybe longer. Um, anything that's not, that is postmarked today and arrives by the time of the campus on Monday will be counted. But if it comes the next day, it's too late, it, it won't get in there. So please, um, hand, deliver your ballots, if you can't do it, give it to your husband, give it to your neighbor. Um, anybody else can bring it up for you if you trust them. Um, and we have the drop box that we have the only.
You can drive right up and put it in.
Drive right up.
And that'll count for sure.
Yep, and it'll come.
Bring it in today and put it in the drop box.
Yep.
Anything that's dropped at the Humble Post Office will go to Des Moines before it comes back.
Yes.
So that's the reason she's saying that.
Yes, please, yeah, it's not that we don't like our post office, we have a very good post office. It's just there is a little bit of a time lag there and we want your ballot to count.
With that, I'd make a motion to adjourn if we're done.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.